Okay, it's close enough to seven and it got really quiet. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Silver Falls School Board to order and please go to Kenneth Denise. First up, Jim Brockner and Sue Fisher, Vocational Education. Jump right in. Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
How's retirement?
It's...
I don't see...
I don't know. Just keep feeding the animals.
It's almost one-sided, it's not...
I'm like, man, hope it's not as long as the paper is.
Wait until I start talking. Very long. Anyway, just want to thank you for having us. Sue and I kind of want to do a short overview. I wrote Vocational Education, you can call it Career Education, I mean, there's a zillion names for it now, but to kind of go over it. I feel like you guys have already made a positive statement towards career in the sense that we build what I always called industrial arts or ed building or whatever term again you want to use. But part of what her and I have been concerned with are a few things. Number one, the reasons for a career ed. And when I talk about a career ed, I'm talking about the whole district, so this would be a district-wide. Number one, only 50% of our kids go to college now. That's why I worded it. Probably a little less. Part of it's cost, part of it's finding their niches, the way I'll say it as we go along. Over the years, now, and again, I'm going to show my age here, we've had many successful career ed programs. Some are still here, like I'll say, Cal-Bach. Others have gone away and they're not as prevalent. For example, in the eighties, we had the business program, went out and, I mean, people were begging for our kids who weren't in the business program. We used to have a construction program where we built homes and the like. In fact, my house was built predominantly by the kids who came from that program. We had the AutoTech program, which was stronger then, and it varies a little bit. And then we used to have culinary arts program. Those are just to name a few that have been here, gone, and disappeared. And those are the kinds of things that I think that we need to look at and implement Part of why Sue and I are here is our frustration, what we see are kids who can't find a niche, okay? And I'll give you an example, I won't use names, but I had a girl in AG, okay? Had difficulty with English. I don't think she ever passed the power standard in any one year. Wanted to go into the restaurant business because that's where her parents were in. Then I talked to her, hey, take some business, I mean, the whole thing. And ultimately, she dropped out. And I really believe if we'd had a system like the old days, that she would still be in school. Another example, and this I've had in my AG groups for, well, this was in my seventh year or my eighth year with the AGs, I have this every year within, and sometimes multiple kids, is that they were fringe kids coming in. Some were because of language, some were just not motivated, but because they would get behind, or they had, were, came in at a low level, they would end up taking English, then they'd take remedial English. In some cases, if they failed and they had to make up the English. Same thing's true with math, and then remedial math. So out of seven classes, they were really taking five classes to make up two. So they never got to the shots. They never got to where they're going to ultimately end up. One kid, I'm sure, had been a great welder, I mean, and that was where his strengths were, and yet he couldn't get there. And so that's kind of what I'm worried about, and somehow have to find a system to help them out, which is what I'm going to talk about. So that's kind of what, to give you, those are just a few things. So this is not a system that you're going to do overnight. It's, I call it pie in the sky, so to speak, but I think if you buy in, and in a way you've already have, it's a system that would, what I think would find more kids to find their niche, which has always been my philosophy in teaching, you know? Not everybody's going to go to college, but hey, if you're the best welder, then be the best welder. If you're the best plumber, be the best plumber. And that, and I think we can do that at Silverton because we have the facilities. So we'll start. This is what mine would look like. And I guess I should say one other thing. Sue and I are not just representing us. There are lots, I can, there's lots of teachers who believe what I do at the high school and grade school. There are lots of community people, and I think some of you believe it too, I really do. So the first thing to start off in this new systems, what I'll say, is the elementary school would be K through six, and they'd be on fundamentals. So in other words, we'd still have the same schools we have, but be a K through six program, kindergarten through sixth grade. And only thing different, so to speak, than it is now, is that in some way, I would like to see if a kid gets behind or is at grade level, that during the summer, they have to go to summer school. Because I believe if they're even, just barely at grade level, and then after, after summer, they come back and they're behind. And I think it's like, they continue to get further and further and further behind. So that's the first thing. The second thing, which I know you guys have just gone through this, and that is, I'd like to see a middle school built. The middle school's for everybody. It's seventh and eighth grade, and it's a hands-on school. And why, why do I think seventh and eighth grade? I guess I'll answer this first. Hey, we just tried to build, put up two bonds and they didn't pass. The difference is, why do I think this would pass? Because it's for everybody. All seventh and eighth grader are going to go to it, period. And it's going to be a hands-on school. And I've always thought, what, before, why did the high school bonds pass? Because everybody knew, all the kids are going to go to the high school. It was for everybody in the district. And I still think, not that it should be, it's a long time ago, but the little school, city school and all that, I still think people are upset that it got shoved down their throat. It's not by anybody in here, nobody in this, by the legislature, but still, people are upset about it personally. I mean, it's been 20-some years. Anyway, what would this school have? Number one, it would be, and I think you should think about this at the high school on that, is a bookless school. Everybody would have computers. Every kid would get one, okay? Even AutoTech, even HVAC guy, he comes with a tablet, looks online, slides it through, and I think that's what we got to go to. I just believe that's in the future. So this school would be state-of-the-art. The other thing, if you would turn to the first page where it shows Mark Twain curriculum, and I just, that's their curriculum, I just grabbed it. So that's what this is this year, I just Xeroxed it off, copied it. If you look at the next page, this, the next page would be the proposed course requirements at the junior high. And you'll notice, first thing is that there's two years of vocational education. And this is based on the same school or seventh period day that the high school has and what Mark Twain has. And I'll say this, I'm not an advocate of a seventh period day. I kind of like a trimester, I'm not going to get into the change, but a trimester, you would get more units in, which is a 12-week system, and the periods are longer. So you get your hours in, in 12 weeks, and that's a semester, okay? So you can end up, if you only have five periods, you get seven and a half credits. If you went to six, because you'd have to tweak the school that you could get as many as nine, and still fall within the parameters of a term or a unit. If you look on the next page, the main difference in courses, obviously, is I put computers. The thing I like about this system, everybody starts in middle school the same. In other words, no one's ever been through a sequence where they're moving class to class. You've got seven classes or five classes, so everybody's the same, so organization's the same. Notice they start with computers, that's just, you'd start off since this, they're entering a system where they have their own computer, what's on it. So teaching the word processing, teaching keyboarding, and obviously, every, whatever tablet they get would be slightly different. Science, and this is kind of where I'm getting at, that it's hands-on. Science would be two-fold units, since I'm a science guy, one of the things I'd like to see is hands-on engineering, robotics, where they do projects in the second half, so that's a whole semester. I really believe that kids don't get enough hands-on. They just don't get it anymore. They don't take anything apart, they don't build anything, they don't get to it. And I give the example of the girls, and even guys, when we get into electricity at the freshman level, and you give them a multimeter, and you say, okay, we're going to, and you check for resistance stuff, but instead, I said, okay, we're going to find out what the voltage is in the plug-in. You would think that I'm trying to electrocute every one of them. And I make every kid do it. And you would have been amazed that, well, Mr. Brechner and I, that I could die, you know? This is a machine, this is how you set it up. And I just believe they don't get enough hands-on. So that would be an example of a little bit of a difference. First semester, engineering, robotics, and I don't care if you start with Lego robotics and then work to regular robotics, and then get into what I call projects, like, an example would be, they build bridges, and you see what the torque, the weight ratio that they can hold. That's the kind of stuff that, I'm the first one who did it in the freshman year, and that's when we have to test them, a lot of them haven't done, where they have to prove to me a change in engineering. So having a whole term of engineering, which would be the change. The rest is, the same as always, physical science, there's science and all that stuff. In vocational, okay, this is the big change, where, and again, they could, and if boys or girls, they could pick anything they want, wood, small engines, I call it computer hardware. Hey, tear apart, tear apart the computers and build the computer. Make them get used to it. My son, I used to just give him stuff to tear apart, he's built many a computer on his own. He's not afraid to take anything apart, and I just believe that kids, if I asked them to do it in the, in the high school, they had difficulty with it. They don't get enough of it. So, and again, I don't care what ones you pick, in other words, it's what you want to have for the curriculum, but I just put wood, small engines, and that because I thought those would fit for that age level. Again, it'd be up to the people who are going to teach it. Eighth grade, to me, you could do it just like Ock survey. And the reason for that, now you've done that and given the background at the eighth grade level, so now you could go to higher stuff when you get to the high school, okay? So that's kind of the idea of the middle school. We're starting earlier, we're starting with computers, and then we would continue to carry it through on to the high school, which is the next part.
So again, this is just some ideas, it doesn't mean that this is the way it has to be, but it tends to lay itself out to be actually two schools within a school. And so I came up with for technical work, for ready academy, and if you look on the back, then you see the college prep academy. Because I've seen it firsthand, I've been a classroom teacher, I've been college and career counselor, and I've been a counselor. And it separates itself out. That's really, truly how it is within a high school. And both Jim and I feel really strong that we've got to somehow find, help students find a niche. Because as they feel right now, a great majority of them, that they're just jumping through hoops to meet the standards, to get the high school diploma for whatever reason, there's no meaning in it. And so we both come before you today to look at, what can we do to bring meaning to these students' education? And as I worked with the class of 2016, I cannot tell you the number of kids that I've worked with that, they're not going to be college bailing, they have no desire to go to college, but to go get a certificate, yes, to learn a trade, to go in an apprenticeship, absolutely. And the way that it's set up now, and it's not just Silver Falls School District, it's the whole state, it's the whole nation. In effect, Massachusetts is going to put on their bill in 2016 to get rid of the core standards. So here we go again. Here we go again. And so, anyway, we'll come back to that in a bit. Setting up a curriculum that is going to help those students understand why I need reading, why I need this math, and how it ties them to their niche of what they want to do. And we're not doing that. It's just not happening. So intro to technical writing, technical writing. You know, I, I'm looking at something that's a base that we can build, and then by the time we get to that senior year, how do I apply this to the career that I've chosen? Same with math, science, again, physical science and biology, some type of applied science where I put a note down there, applying to horticulture, apply it to being a vet tech, metals, construction. You know, how does that science apply? And then, of course, we need the community health, world history, US history, UConn government, but we're keeping it to the level that's appropriate for those students. Because they're not going to be those students that are the next page. And in the years that I've worked, I can tell you that that college prep is probably 40 kids out of a senior class, maybe 50 at the most, that are going to follow that strict college prep. Others will do a mix. And then you've got kids that have no ability to do that at all. So it really lends itself to being two schools within a school, or two academies, or whatever you would choose to call it. The pages that follow are some examples of where it's actually happening. Root's port, and we included the article from, it's actually from the OEA magazine, on this gentleman who's actually an electrician, and decided he, he was tired of kids not being able to find their niche, so to speak. And so he went back to get his teaching license, and he did utilize the Career Technical Education Revitalization Grant. And now he's, he's, it's all practical, it's applicable. And so there's information there on what his program looks like at Root's port. Malheur County also took a grant, and I included their, just from the front of their program, but sure, that they have the welding program, nursing aid, medical office assistant program, automation and control. This is all, these are all programs, these are all careers that our students can do and not have to go to a four-year college. Peyton Woods Manufacturing, I'd just like to bring that really to your attention. I know Dean. Dean was actually hired, he's professional woodworking, does beautiful work. He was hired by North Salem High School to re-establish that whole woods program. And he went to bat with industry. And industry totally supported his program, not a dime from the district, totally supported by industry. And he was, that program was so sought after that he was asked by Peyton, Colorado, to come and establish the same. So Jim and I know, money is always going to be, how do we do this? Industry has to be part of this. In order to have the equipment and to continue with our facilities, industry has to buy in, and I know for a fact that industry can't and will. It's just a matter of working with them to make it happen. Next page, and as we know, the Career Technical Building that was established in Salem opened up this, this fall, where the kids from Salem are going. And, you know, this fall, they rolled five times as many students that they initially thought that were going to. And then that brings us to, Statesman Journal had an article in June 2015, where they talked about the 40, 40-20. I personally think that's backwards. And you see my notes there, that it's really 20% that's going to, that really should go on and do the bachelor's degree, onto a master's, possibly a PhD, 40% in the middle. But you know what? We're not doing justice to that bottom 40%. Those are the kids that are getting a lot behind, they're the ones that are struggling to jump through the hoops to get their high school diploma. And as Jim mentioned, they end up in, you know, REEVE 180, math labs, writing labs, and they lose all those opportunities to be in a career technical program, or just even getting their feet wet in the class, to test it out, to see if that is something that they would choose to, to go on and root. So, I think that's all in the packet, isn't it? So what we're trying to do, what the state, what the feds are trying to do is put all kids in the same model. You know that, we know that. Not looking. And, and many kids, school's the only positive thing that they have going in their life. And then when they come and they're struggling to get through writing labs and math labs, how positive can that be? And, and I, you know, I'm preaching to the choir on that, I mean, we know. So I think what we have to do as a group is to ask ourselves, what's best for our students? And is it developing those high skills for workplace to ensure that those kids can go out and actually earn a living for themselves? Or is it jumping through the hoops to meet the standards? And so the challenge that Jim and I would like to propose to you, and we all face that challenge, is to sincerely look at the way that we are currently educating kids. How can we change that? How can we maybe be the district that just steps out and says, you know, we've got to do things different? And does that mean becoming a charter district? I don't know. That's where the discussion needs to start. What can we do to make things different? Because the way it's working now, it's not. And as Jim said, it's a process, it's not going to be something that we do overnight. And I think what, what we would like to do is raise to that challenge of how can we, as a school district, bring ourselves up to be uniquely different to educate kids the way that they really need to be educated, than standards and tests, and more standards and tests. So anyway, Jim and I look forward to hearing from you, hopefully in December, after you've had some time to chew on this, give some thoughts to it. We know it's not, I mean, it's a challenge. It's, it's not going to be an overnight thing to do. It's a whole different way of thinking. But we hope to hear back from you, and we're here to go to bat on the challenge, because both of us strongly believe that something's got to be different. How creative can we be? How can we tell the Department of Ed that it's not working?
I think there's your, that's the first problem.
Well, I, and we're long-winded, Andy, I'll take the heat, but anyway. But I, I just think we owe it to our kids. I mean, like, my kids have graduated, and now they're back, and I have grandkids that are coming, grandson, granddaughter, you know, and who knows where they're going to go? I mean, if my granddaughter wants to be an electrical engineer, good, well, I'll make it happen. If she wants to be the best welder there is, and I bring that up because, like, my brother-in-law, he runs three plants, two in, two in Seattle and two in Phoenix, or four total, I don't know what kind of different people. But his best, his best type of welders that he has are three women, because it's fine touch aluminum, electric, and those are by far, and they have the skill to do it.
Just because they're more patient.
Oh, not going there. But anyway, so anyway, I thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
I could kill for hours.
A number of years ago, I don't know if you heard, we had the type of arrangement with the local labor unions. You know if they still do?
I have no idea.
I don't know, and I, and I, I mean, obviously, unions, there's one way of, there are also, you know, I think certain industries would be available. I know my son, Intel, they're begging for good stainless, no, that's different, stainless steel welders, I mean, they'll...
Well, the pipe fitters, there's, there's a huge demand for them right now because somebody retired.
Oh yeah, and that's all going to be true. And again, I mean, that, I, it's just a statement.
But at the same time, it kind of goes in what you're talking about, because I've talked to some of these programs, and they're looking for people with good science and math skills that they can plug into their program to, to...
To train them.
To train them.
Exactly.
That shows, that shows where they can use the information from the classroom in the real world.
Yep.
I, I, I just, I can just go on for hours. You guys, thank you, I mean, you encapsulate so much of what I read and think about and what I see out there in the real world. I, I got some buddies that, had they gone through high school, had they been subjected to these standards, I think they would have just given the school a middle finger and walked out the door.
Yeah, exactly right.
But, but, but yet, they're wildly, but they're very successful in, in what they do, but, but if you would have tried to shove them in this, where, in these standards, they just, they couldn't do it.
My frustration is, like I said, see kids who I know actually want to go there, and they're so far behind in remediation, which is why, and I don't mean it negative, but the, the part about summer school down low, and, and I honestly think, and I don't know what it is, because I've had kids all along, but somehow they catch fire. I mean, I remember a kid who got low grade in physical science, decided what he was going to be, and by the time I had him in chem, best student. And I talked to him, what, what happened? He goes, I know what I want to be, I figured it out. And that's part of what these programs are for, you know? And that's why, hey, I'm in, maybe I want to be in the restaurant business, but maybe they end up in management. Or like my sister-in-law, she went through a culinary, she ended up going, she went through culinary there, and ultimately, didn't like that part of it, but the business part that she had, she's now the department of revenue, one of the head ladies, and she's, it's the business part that she got from that skill set ultimately, used it, and then took off, finally found her niche.
Yeah, and you guys wish I had more of a, a two-track approach, more like, something more like what they're doing in Europe.
I, I wouldn't want to say Europe, but might get a bad name, but...
But you're right.
Yeah, many are doing that. My wife, my wife has an exchange student from Germany that I keep in touch with, and we, her and I, we were all visiting months ago about, about that, how they, you know, her brother was on the high track and chose the low track and then decided to move back. They could move around.
Right.
At, at some level, about seventh, eighth grade, there's, you know, here's your aptitude, you qualify for the high one if you want it, you can, you can move around, but there was, there was, there was essentially some sorting at some point.
And I don't try to be negative, because we already, in my opinion, we have the finest facility around at the high school. So I mean, I really want to emphasize that, but I also would like to see it move down, which is why the junior high, I mean, don't do enough hands-on. We don't take stuff apart and put it together, hey, why would you do this? I mean, and the computer, to me nowadays, okay, you got your computer, if you're used to doing that, I mean, you can go on and YouTube anything practically and find out how to put it together, but if you're scared and never had to do any of that, you know, then you won't do it. And I really believe that all that is, is experience, and we got to give them experience.
And the point of having that exploration at the seventh and eighth grade level really helps that sorting process, and so then by the time you can get them to be that senior, then you're looking at those internships or, you know, three periods of work experience... or, you know, three grades of work experience. Where it's, sometimes that's really hard to do when you start at a freshman level, you just don't have that much time.
I'm also gonna say this, 'cause I had some buddies, they all went to college. But they took Woods as a seventh grader with me, okay? And then I think they took it, 'cause I think you could take it twice, they took it as an eighth grader. Okay, and guess what their passion is, they're retired and all that, is woodworking. They got it when they were young, in seventh and eighth grade, and it's one of those things that when they have time, that's what they're gonna do. And I'm convinced, we don't get that to our kids, the way it's set up.
Have you guys seen the problem getting, getting worse the further we've gotten into Common Core and things like that? I mean, have you seen kind of a, you know what I mean, kind of a progression of more, more kids just kinda going through the motions?
Some are frustrated, very frustrated.
Yeah, I could imagine, especially if they can't get to any of the classes they want to take because they're...
You know, the kids that follow the college prep, they're determined, motivated anyway. And they're gonna do whatever it takes to get to that end point. But the kids that are not that track or that mindset, you know, I, I'm gonna just speak from the heart. It hurts me to see the number of boys that drop out of school or, um, end up sometimes being behavior issues because they're in lab after lab after lab and they need to be out working with their hands.
Yeah.
You know, I've been around the block enough times that we need hands-on. And that's why I say that forty, forty, twenty really should be twenty, forty, forty, but...
Wait, what, where, go ahead.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Clarify question, you were saying that make the middle school for all the outline schools to bring them in, in town for middle school, so...
One seventh and eighth grade program.
Okay.
I mean, everybody would come.
And bring them in.
Yeah, wherever, hey, and I don't care where you put it, although, to me, it would seem logical to go down by the old high school 'cause maybe you can use the high school facilities. If you ever did put up a bond and you bought into this, maybe, I know this'll sound weird, maybe you're gonna build a forge. So you do blacksmith stuff at the high school at the same time you do, I mean, I, I don't know. It depends on who you hire and how you wanna go through this. So that's my honest opinion, along with who helps us in, in manufacturing or industry, do you see what I'm saying?
It's great, I mean, I did forging stuff in eighth grade, I remember, and it was awesome.
So did I, did tempers, we made foam with it, we made...
Okay, that's, thanks.
Actually, just one more question, we'll quit Jim and Sue. So you've brought this awareness to us, you put it on our lap, and you think it's worth a challenge. But since you're immersed in this on a daily basis, have you yourself been working on a detailed plan that maybe you're gonna unfold later? Or this is just, this is the epiphany, this is what you're working on, and we'll learn from here?
We're both retired, but, but...
We lost some time.
But, I mean, if, if the school board, I'm more than willing to work on stuff like this, to be honest. 'Cause like I said, to me, and I, I view, this is my community now, these are my kids, these are my, from my grandkids to the, I know this sounds weird, to the kids that are fifty years old, those are my kids, you know, that I have and so on. I mean, one of my kids is now my doctor, and, I mean, that's, that's how, which is what I want. I, I train them and along, you wanna be successful.
So basically, this is the framework we get to fill in the blanks, basically?
Yes, and I know we have, you have other issues, you have to look at money, I mean, I'm not, I understand that. But I really believe we gotta get our kids to the area that they wanna be.
Well, I think the industry is starting to have the district bring this to them. I mean, you would be surprised, the support that you would get for this. It's crazy.
I'm just saying, like, my brother-in-law was a machinist, trained as a machinist, okay? And went into it and got, and then that was the era, the computer started. So he went into computers so he could program all of the machines. And then they liked him so much, they made him the foreman and he went off and did the business part and stuff. But he said, no matter what he does, it always falls back to, he knows how the machines work, he knows how to program the machines, he has the fundamentals. And he went into industry at a time, like for GE, and we obviously, we don't have this educationally, but he, the first thing he did within a month said, hey, you were making a part and you're machining it, you should cast it, trim it up, it'll save you a lot of money. And it saved GE one point two million a year, and he got twenty percent of it, which is slightly different than our era. But the point is, he understood the system and went through it, and it all, he said, I base it all on what I had when I went through school. I'm sorry, we went over fifteen minutes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gal.
Thanks.
It's Brentor's fault.
Yeah.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda and Marie, this is collaboration grant.
So actually, we'd like to thank, uh, Jim and Sue that opened the app, because honestly, we had no idea that that really was gonna merge really well with what we're gonna be talking about. So, um, first of all, my daughter took every welding class at high school and did fix our boat trailer this summer, so go ahead. So that was a good thing. So we're here to talk a little bit about the collaboration grant. Um, that's a grant we received, four hundred and ten thousand dollars. I'm the facilitator of the grant. Uh, it involves four areas that we wanna just kind of review, review with you on that. First is the teacher and administrator evaluation system. So last year, we did over six hundred peer observations of teachers, observing teachers to help improve teaching and learning. That's ultimately what this grant is all about, is educator effectiveness. Uh, there's a component for professional development. We spent over a hundred thousand dollars sending teachers to conferences to use one-to-one devices. Because just 'cause you give teachers and their classroom iPads doesn't necessarily mean they know how to use them. So professional development on that. Same with kindergarten teachers to Vegas for a conference, so that they could incorporate the full-day kindergarten. You don't just teach things twice as long to kindergarteners, you have to have the skills how to engage them during that timeframe. Um, we sent teachers to be trained, help facilitate our PLCs, and, and the list goes on, 'cause it was over a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, another component of the grant is the creative compensation piece. Um, it's looking at how we pay teachers, does it align with our values and our beliefs? Ben Lepine and Phoenix Talent, two school districts, this year have incorporated an alternative pay scale for their teachers. So we have a team that is looking at that and seeing how that aligns with our values and beliefs. And we're just at the beginning phases of that. So we're researching and surveying staff on their input for that. Uh, the final component is career pathways. So I just mentioned how we spent over a hundred thousand dollars sending teachers to different places to get professional development. The idea is to have our local experts. So instead of constantly sending teachers away to get trained, uh, we wanna use our own experts that we've trained to train each other. And to have other people come to us as the experts. And so the whole goal with that is educator effectiveness. So what we wanna do with you is put you through an activity that we went through when we first started working on this grant. We asked our teachers to look at the way they teach differently. And so we're gonna ask you to go through this little activity. So we're gonna kinda team you up.
So let's do, so Ron, Tom, and Aaron, why don't the three of you work together? And then let's put, so Tim, Wally, and Todd together, and then Irv, you and Andy can do this.
Oh, sorry.
Geez!
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we're gonna ask you to divide your chart into two columns.
So make a T-chart, that big nice T, somebody has to be the...
Someone has to be the...
The secretary. All right, so down the left-hand side, I want, put it back...
You said two columns or three?
Two, two. Two. Uh, I want you to think about early nineteen hundreds, Henry Ford. And what did Henry Ford look for in an employer?
An employee.
Employee, thank you, back in the early nineteen hundreds.
So what attributes and qualities down the left-hand side? So label the top four.
What did he look for?
Give us, just brainstorm as many as you can in the next three minutes. Attributes and qualities that Henry Ford looked for in an employee?
What would he consider a good employee?
I'm gonna hit with their hands.
I don't know, he's watching on the screen. Do you have a real hate?
Probably not.
He was progressive.
You know what? Probably not, table as well.
Because he was...
It was pretty...
They're gonna have to do this.
Then someone's...
You can't have a little...
So give out thirty more seconds. There's a price for the...
There is not, there's no price to like this.
We have... Four thousand dollars if you didn't pay your...
Linda breaks into it all the time.
I rarely, on occasion, I broke into the... Get one or two more attributes or qualities. What would Henry Ford have valued in an employee?
Okay, so finish your thought. And so we'll just kinda have a share out, and if, uh, they don't include something, when we get to you, add that to the share out. So go ahead and tell us what you put on your list.
Hard worker, takes orders, punctual, literate, and then has integrity.
All right, great. Anything different?
Yeah, reliable, able, able to work with hands, stable, innovative, and organized.
Irv?
Uh, tendence, creativity, follows instruction, and family-oriented.
Nice, excellent. All right, so those early nineteen hundreds. So we're gonna jump ahead now to current day and age, two thousand fifteen. Uh, and we'll take a current employee, let's say, Google, all right? What does Google look for in employee?
What are the attributes? Attributes that Google is seeking when they are hiring an employee?
Current day.
Couple minutes, jot that down right on the slide.
No, they don't. No, absolutely not.
Uh, what'd you say?
Punctual. They don't care.
Somebody who's, um, tech, technical.
That's true.
I know, I'm kinda looking for somebody that can worry about their stuff, they're married, they're... They have like skateboards right around the facility, they've got all the food and drinks, I guess, they've got snacks, I mean, they just...
Protective, just produce.
Just produce, yeah, I like that, 'cause they don't care, 'cause they can take a nap for three hours.
Just get them, just get them, just have them on.
They treat you really well.
Oh, yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. Teaching is true. I'll say data, Kelly.
So again, about thirty more seconds?
Yeah.
How many do you think you've been trying? Oh, shit, like thirty-seven.
Which is not a problem. I would like kids to come up with...
I mean, it wasn't in the... It's just a couple of...
Hopefully, this is extra.
Show up in the...
Okay. So we'd like you now to draw a line from the things on the left, those attributes, to...
I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
To that match with things on the right. Draw a line.
We don't co-key.
We would not.
We can still do it.
Easy connections? Left or right?
Yeah.
Or is that a stretch?
When you say easy connections, I'm sorry.
It's, are you finding easy matches where you could easily go, oh, that's the same, that's the same, that's the same?
Not terribly easy.
Okay.
They're quite a bit di- I mean, it's different.
Yeah.
So the question we asked our teachers, are they preparing kids for the job on the left? Or are they preparing kids for a job on the right? And those are hard questions to ask teachers. Because it's a different type of kid that we have growing up. So Linda and I...
Oh, you said Google, and Google's a kind of a unique company.
Excellent, glad you said that. Perfect, so let's take you two. Thank you, Wally.
Well, most companies, you don't wanna be like Google.
Well, so, but do companies wanna be like Nike or Capital Auto Group? We've got locals, we've got construction companies, we've got, this is pulled off in about, oh, ten minutes, fifteen minutes? If I wanted to search employee opportunities in any of these businesses, we chose local, Capital Auto Group. If I wanted to be that, this management, I could apply for a management position, I could apply for a finance position, or I could apply for a mechanic, um, position. Um, ancestry, ancestry dot com, uh, we pulled that off of a Forbes list, it's one of the most up-and-coming, uh, businesses that are, that are seeking employees. We did a couple, um, you know, bigger companies, obviously, Google, Facebook, and Nike are, are big in being known for being innovative. Uh, but then we searched a local, this Walsh Construction Company is out of Portland. Uh, but I just want to take a second and read you, these all are pulled directly out of essentially, what are these companies looking for in their employees? So these are listed from their job descriptions or from their, please fill out our application if you meet this criteria. So they're looking for people, we want you to create, take risks, pursue greatness, create innovative solutions, get fully immersed in our culture of curiosity and innovation, be energized and inspired, break the rules and redefine the medium, be bold, be unique, be authentic. We try new things and learn from the stumbles and successes, create a fun and profitable atmosphere. It's not my job, is not in our vocabulary. We value spirited and constructive debate. We respect the power of collective teams. We work quickly and collaboratively to build smarter and more meaningful solutions on a global scale. We empower our teams to find creative solutions to difficult problems. The best idea always wins. We leverage the strengths of all team members. When you are in charge of making a difference, there's no limit to what you can do. These are the jobs that our kids need to be prepared to do. And while I understand that Jim and Sue have some frustrations aligned with the Common Core, the Common Core is preparing kids to do these jobs, whether they are the welder, whether they are the manager, whether they are the finance guy, because the reality is, is Common Core is about garnishing an opinion, taking a stand, and defending it. The practice of argumentation starts in the Common Core at second grade, and it expands into every content area. So you look at literature, take a stand. Should, was the villain in the novel justified in his actions? Take a stand and support it with evidence from the story. We do it in science. We are going to, uh, establish, you're gonna write a hypothesis before we do this experiment, you're gonna conduct the experiment, you're gonna conduct your data, and you're gonna defend your hypothesis. Were you right, were you wrong, cite your evidence to support your, uh, premise. We do it in history. Take a global issue, uh, one-child policy in China, is it appropriate, why or why not? Cite some research, cite some evidence to support your opinion. We do it in math, solve the problem one way and support, prove that you're right by either communicating the way that you solved the problem in writing or solving it another way to justify your response. Common Core is preparing our kids to be successful in the world that is looking for employees that don't just follow orders, obey demands, show up on time, are organized, punctual, the kinds of things that are listed on that left-hand side are not the kinds of things that employers are looking for anymore. And that presents to us an inherent challenge. Because our classroom teachers are not necessarily inherently skilled to prepare kids for the world. That is different than they came from. We, I was listening to an administrator say today, we don't even realize how differently wired our kids are. Uh, we sat in a classroom and first graders were sitting down to do the listening center. Totally appropriate activity for six-year-olds. We read the text out loud and then we reinforce the text by having them listen to it, um, with headphones and in small groups and whatever. We read the text out loud and then we reinforce the text by having them listen to it with headphones and in small groups and whatever. Well, it was a cassette player, so we, they can play, they can push play and listen to the story. There are not six-year-olds in the world that have any idea what it means to rewind. They've never had to rewind anything. So poor kids are done with the story and they literally are looking at the teacher in the classroom like, oh, it's done. And she's saying, well, listen to it again, you know, build it, build your fluency, do it again. We're having to teach kids how to rewind, because in their world, you just push the button again. The DVD resets, the iPad plays again, there is no such thing. We need to acknowledge that and we need to stay ahead of the curve. And so the Collaboration Grant gives us tremendous opportunity to offer teachers additional professional development to keep us ahead of the curve. But that kind of change coming this fast and furious comes with growing pains, distinct growing pains. The administrators are feeling it as we are out in classrooms trying to provide feedback and support teachers in an effort that we had, we never had to teach that way when we were in the classroom. And they didn't have to teach the way because they weren't students in the same way that their students are coming to. So it's, it's incredibly challenging, but it's an invigorating time to be in education. We're fortunate that we have this Collaboration Grant to support us, because there are a lot of districts that are facing the same sorts of situations without the additional funds to, to be able to do the kinds of things that we've been able to do.
So it's brought up a lot of questions, do we have the infrastructure, Sue and Jim were talking about that, to be able to support this. So in the next couple months, we have groups of teachers that are looking at our teaching calendar and teaching schedule. Jim mentioned he loves trimesters. Is trimest, are trimesters the best avenue we have for our students? You know, we're looking at schools that are doing well, growing their students, and we're not just talking about achievement, we're talking about the growth of students and what systems do they use? And so we're putting some teams together to look at that. If any of you are interested in working with teachers to look at a teaching calendar, what does that look like? Early release every Monday, you know, more professional development, teaching schedules, block schedules. I mentioned trimesters, different things like that, we're putting teams to start researching, investigating that and working on that through the next few months, because I know that you made four decisions in March that deal with those. And so if there's people who are interested in that, we would love you to be working with the process, our administrators, they're gonna get the invitation on December first, to see what's the best, do we have the best system set up right now to work with us?
The other piece that's going to continue to come to you over the course of time is the reality that occurs when the grant funds run out. So this is a three-year opportunity for us, we are in year two. And the reality is, is that the work that we are pursuing is too important to just stop at the end of year three. Now, do we believe that somehow there's just gonna be four hundred thousand dollars coming out of the general fund? No, but do we believe that there need to be specific conversations about how we are creative with the way we are currently using funds? When we look at things like the way we currently spend our Title II A, our federal dollars that are set aside for professional development, the way we currently do things like tuition reimbursements, teachers who are saying, I want to go get graduate credit and be reimbursed for that. We're going to have to have some perhaps difficult conversations about what it looks like to continue moving forward that may require changes to the way we have done business in the past in order to continue us moving forward in a direction of positive successes for kids in being prepared for the job force. So it's an exciting time, teachers are excited, but it's also a lot of hard work.
So what about the kids that like Jim and Sue were talking about, who are, the kids who, you know, want to get into those technical classes, the welding and the shop and stuff like that, but they're so busy, if they're on a lower level academically, they're so busy trying to meet the, meet the standards. Or are we just, you know, I still think, this is my own thing, but I think they should have started the Common Core kindergarten one year and started and just rolled it through instead of expecting kids now to be meeting all these standards that they have been prepared for for the last eight years or however, what about those kids?
So my pushback would be that Common Core can fit in a welding class. Common Core can fit in the, the concept of how richly do you understand how numbers work and how words work and how language works? How do you make an argument, how do you defend yourself? That is irrespective of content, so that can occur in a welding class. So I am, could be fully supportive of integrated science courses or what they're calling technical, inter, technical writing or that sort of concept, I don't think, I don't think they're counterproductive. I don't think they're mutually exclusive.
There was a conversation today, a training today, literacy standards for our auto shop and for A. And so they were like, we can do that, we totally could do that, and we can integrate it to help those kids, exactly.
Well, they're already working on getting classes like in the, in the shop and stuff that are gonna meet the standards.
Right.
They already have some, I think, don't they?
Right, so courses like construction math, which meet the rigor and the requirement of, yes, of offering actual math credit. So that's not an elective course anymore, that's now been vetted through the entire process. So a kid earning construction math credit, that actually counts as a math credit now. Yeah, so absolutely, you have to, you have to go through the process. I mean, there are hoops that you must do just as far as accreditation and those kinds of things in order to justify that the course is meeting the rigor and the standards in order to call it a math course instead of an elective course, but it is absolutely not impossible. And I believe it's worth the effort and the energy to do that, to meet the needs of kids that are not college prep kids, absolutely. Yeah, but I don't think they have to be, I don't think we have to choose one or the other.
So I've, I've heard stories, and of course there's two sides to every story, but you know, some of these kids are juniors, seniors, and they're taking math and they have a test and they're, you know, of course, not doing very well in it. And, you know, now they're getting a C or a D or whatever in that class, primarily because of the test. And now they're afraid that's gonna hold them back from getting into a better college or something. Now they're looking at, you know, instead of Oregon State or University of Oregon or something like that, now they're thinking, well, maybe Chimaqueta or, or Mount Hood Community College might be where I'm gonna go. So how is that, or how do we overcome these little hurdles these kids have to help them get into the better school they want so they can, you know, go for that career that they're after?
So, let me clarify, see if I'm hearing what you're asking. So the concern is that because the rigor in the courses has increased, now a child who normally maybe would have gotten As through their whole career is now getting a C, is that the?
Correct, correct, mainly due to, I guess, from what I'm hearing from, from the tests they're taking, which are differently, set up differently now.
Because they're skill-based.
They're, they're having, yeah, they're having trouble adapting to the new testing. So how do we get those kids around that hurdle?
So, well, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to clarify still if we're talking about, is that because we've implemented standards-based grading? I mean, there are lots and lots of pieces that could be impacting a child's grade. So like Common Core is not new to, so I, if we have a kid that, you know, last year was getting good grades and this year is getting poor grades, my sort of gut reaction to that is that may have more to do with the way material's being graded based upon standards now rather than points in the gradebook. And so a student who perhaps used to be able to earn extra credit or who earned a majority of their points based upon teacher-pleaser behavior, so my homework is always turned in on time and it's neat and it's legible, and so, you know, I, I get points for that in the gradebook versus now in a standards-based system, the only thing that you earn in a gradebook is demonstrating proficiency, mastery on the specific standard, so whatever the, you know, nine, thirteen standards are embedded in a course. And also, this early in the year, so we're just halfway through the first semester, a C at this point is probably reflective of twos and threes in a gradebook, and four is proficient. So standards are set on a term-long or a year-long course, depending upon the course that it is. So it's not out of the question, it's not abnormal for a child to only be getting a three, which would be nearly proficient on a standard that isn't expected for them to master until the end of January with the thought that they would still be increasing to a four over the course of time. So we've done a lot of attempts to educate parents on the fact that when your first, you know, if you get a midterm progress report coming home or getting handed to you this week at conferences, it's not, it's not a bad thing for that to have twos and threes on it, because your child's making progress towards a four, which is the semester end or the year-end standard. So when you deal in a rubric in a standards-based system, you live in a continuum, you don't live in a block of time. So it's difficult to say in October, my kid's getting a C. Well, no, your child's not getting a C, your child is making progress towards the individual standard. So the whole grading system, the whole way we talk about kids earning credit is different. So my gut is, if we're talking about a specific child or, or a pocket of kids who are saying, I have Cs, but I used to get As, my gut is, we're probably really talking about more of a standards-based grading impact than necessarily a Common Core impact. But I might, I, you know, I would need probably more specifics to really drill down. But if, if I'm interpreting what I'm hearing from you, that's my, that's my gut response on, on why that's occurring.
Okay, thanks. Your common, we've had this discussion before about not getting points for turning, working on time, bringing, and having a need. It really bothers me because that, we talked about Google, we're talking about Google now. So Google doesn't care when you show up to work, but they do care when you get, when you get your work done. So they've got a deadline, they expect it to be legible, they expect it, and, and we're, in my opinion, we're throwing that out. They're saying, just show us what you know. And, and doing your work on time and, and being able to show that you know what you're doing is very important.
And I'll address that a little bit classroom-wise. The, the goal now is to have the, the mini-assessments as you're going along. So doing things in small increments to get to that big project, so things are being turned in, et cetera, et cetera, as it goes along. That kind of addresses the homework issue, turning it in on time, that there used to be in, in the olden days. And, and I understand where you're coming from, I was a teacher that had to understand that shift also. Because I'm done, I'm ready to move on, but they might not, not necessarily be ready to move on. So, so it's a change and a shift in the teaching of the smaller increments as you go along. So that's why the due dates aren't as concrete as they used to be.
I understand it should be.
I understand, yeah.
Because that, that's expectation in the real world. Also, Nick, we need to be careful when you're talking about the left hand, the right hand, the left and right sides we get here. They're actually both important, depends what you're gonna go into. Some companies, this is important, some other companies, this is important. I visited a little company that, a fellow that my son graduated in, and I tell you, he's, he's interested in the left-hand side and the right-hand side. He's widely successful, I was really impressed, but it depends what you're gonna go into.
To a certain extent, but I don't think there's any company out there anymore that doesn't need people who can solve their own problems. Who doesn't, who doesn't need people who, if, I, I just don't think there's a place anymore where someone just has to do what they're told to do. I, I think we have to train our kids to think.
Depends what you go into. I disagree.
Well, and, and that's okay, but yeah, I, so I would definitely push back on that, that I, I think we would be hard pressed to find some, to find a, you know, long-term career. And I, and you know, some of this is just our philosophical shift, and we've had lots and lots of conversations in our teacher committees about sort of that whole concept, well, in the real world, you, you know, you have to meet deadlines. Well, in the real world, do you have to meet deadlines? You can get an extension on your taxes, you can get a, you know, so there's this concept of, that whole discussion about, well, find me an example where a deadline is a deadline, is a deadline, is a deadline. It, it just has been a very, very healthy conversation.
It's really easy, I, I'm in sales, I would hit a deadline proposal into somebody, I'd lose out on potential sale, so.
Right, but because you miss the deadline, you face the consequences.
Yeah.
Right, and so I guess that's where we are trying to teach kids as well. So when a kid misses the deadline, then the kid faces the consequences, so.
Okay, I was, I was confused hearing that, that wasn't the case, and went, wait a minute, you know, my, I want my kids to understand the deadlines, they don't meet the deadlines and we're gonna have issues here, you know.
However, when you frame the system around the deadlines versus framing the system around the skill or the concept, I think we have it backwards.
Well, I think communication for Common Core is the biggest problem, I think, to public. You know, you hear Common Core, you just shut your ears.
Absolutely, sure, absolutely.
And I was in North Dakota two weeks ago and I almost had to laugh. There's huge signs out in these corn stubble fields, get rid of Common Core. I'm like, even back in North Dakota, they don't like it.
Yeah.
So it was, you know, but, and we're fortunate, Marie and Linda, you are here in Silver Falls. Not all the school districts have that communication to make the board aware of what Common Core involves. I mean, I feel better already since you got up here. You know, because now you've communicated to us what it involves.
And, and I think there was a study, I, which I pulled it, and maybe I'll find, if I can find it, I'll send it to Nathan, she can send it to you. You know, cold call, twenty thousand Americans or whatever, and the reaction, the visceral reaction to the term Common Core was like, you know, five percent approval rating. But you read, you know, do you think kids should be able to do this, do you think kids should be able to do this? You could, they were reading statements out of Common Core and it was like ninety-five percent approval. So the branding, the branding has just killed.
That's what I'm saying, it's bad.
I guess there's, there's been interesting discussion here, we saw Jim and, Jim and Sue's and now we see yours. And I, I, what I hear them lament, and I agree, and I think Wally and some of us, is that we, we're losing the skills to build things. You look at, we have, we had the Henry Ford example, and they made things. And now we're comparing him to Google, a bunch of idea companies.
Except for the bottom one is a construction company, we've pulled that one out of focus.
Agreed, agreed, but, but majority is idea company, even Nike, Nike's ideas are here.
Right.
The work is done somewhere else. And, and, and what we're losing is the skill, and we're, what I really agree with Jim about, you know, great, someone has this great idea to make, you know, we got this, we're, we're, got these kids with incredible, great math standards, and what kind of an electrical engineer they're gonna be if they can't, they're scared to plug a multimeter in their house. And, and that's right, we need more hands-on.
And I think we're saying the same thing, I think what I'm, I think what I'm saying is that if I have a kid sitting in a welding class and the welding machine breaks and he's at, not, please don't do this, it's over to my school in the welding shop, but if the welding machine breaks, I want the kid to have the initiative and the skill set to be able to say, I can figure this out. I'm a problem solver, I, there's gotta be a way where I can fix, you know, I, I absolutely want kids to get their hands dirty. I don't, I don't think that Common Core is a solely cognitive adventure.
You can have, you can have the means, the Common Core means, but you can have whatever medium that's put into it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
An art class or a vocational class, a calculus class, it doesn't matter.
If your machine breaks, do you have the wherewithal and the tenacity to stick with it long enough to figure out how to fix it?
And, and I think, I think that's the concern people have, is that Common Core is just gonna take everybody, shove them in the class and try to make them fit these standards, and, and I think that's the concern that you guys have.
Without really understanding.
That's why we.
To get it, to, you know, let's, let's get this so that there's some hands-on, so that the construction math fits Common Core.
Yeah, we have to make room for both. I mean, we have to make room so kids can get their hands on.
Yeah.
Because, you know, as an employer, I, I know what guys are saying when they say, you just want somebody who's gonna show up on time and take instructions. Well, that's true to a point, but I know for me, if something breaks out in the field, I like to have somebody who would not just call me and say, this broke, you know.
Bingo.
So somebody who can think through a process and maybe come up with a solution themselves. To a certain, you know, to a certain point, I think that's important.
Within boundaries.
Yeah, I think that's important for everything, you know, for welders, for everything.
Absolutely.
But they also have to have that hands-on piece, a lot of kids do, to get plugged in somewhere, so.
Well, and to learn.
Yeah.
How manipulative, that's how you, you teach them to learn.
Yeah.
Just a point of reality too, this Walsh Construction, that's more of an idea company as well. They don't actually do the construction, they manage it.
Could be, yeah.
But they didn't know that, Wally, they just picked the Walsh Construction because it was a construction company, I'm sure.
Yeah, trying to find, you know, trying to say that.
Construction company.
The reality is, is just about anywhere you look anymore, I mean, our job applications, I mean, we're asking for critical thinkers. The essay questions that we ask our teachers to answer are not, are you gonna be at work on time and do you follow directions? I mean, we want, as a district, explore, what do you believe is, you know, a pivotal issue in education right now? And what should we do to solve it? We're asking people to think critically and to provide an opinion and to support evidence, you know.
Which is great, used everywhere.
Right, you know, I, I think, I, I just think we'd be hard pressed to find a career where we, we don't benefit by teaching our kids to think.
Well, you're, you're on the right track, you just gotta educate the rest of us what Common Core involves.
Sure.
And what it stands for.
And society in general, my daughter had a conversation with somebody yesterday that thought that all the, everything came from Obama administration. And that she, she was a robot, just lived exactly what she's told.
So, question for you, lady, so you're sitting here right now as a, you're, you're planting the seed for the next round of funding, for the Collaboration Grant. And I know we talk about a lot of the kids having issues with understanding or grasping the Common Core. How much of this actually is the teachers not buying into the program and maybe not giving their all, teaching? And maybe not giving their all, teaching the program? Or resisting the change so the kids aren't getting the benefit of what the teachers actually can bring to the table?
We've asked teachers that exact question with that, and they're overwhelmed. Change is scary, you know? And if you admit that what you're doing perhaps needs to change, that's a lot of extra work. So it is a slow process that we are doing, but teachers are acknowledging it. And, you know, they talk now about how hard they work, and now we're saying, "Yes, you do work hard, and we'd like you to work a little harder." And so that's where we're talking about what, how can we support them with the professional development and those things.
So the money, basically, it's really not as much for the kids as for the teachers to get them turned around so they actually know how to teach problem?
Yeah, so the crux of the grant is educator effectiveness. And so the goal is to improve teaching and learning, but really the funds are not student-directed. The funds are.
So if the funds aren't going to be there for the next round of funding, do you see some major issues with teachers as far as being able to educate our kids?
I think there will be some, I think there will be, yes, I think we will need to change the way we do business. And some of that will be at the administrative level, in the kinds of supports that we ask our administrators to be specifically to the teachers in their buildings. If we don't have external support, if we don't have local experts to, that we can put on a stipend to ask to do those extra duties, that that will fall back to the administrators. So we will need to have some hard conversations about what do we take off the administrators' plates in order for them to function in those roles more specifically. We will want to look at existing pots of funds that I alluded to, federal funds that already come in and things that we have currently set aside that are bargained. And we bargained for the tuition reimbursement pool. Well, is that the most effective use of that money? I don't know. And again, because all those things are bargained, I don't have a lot of control personally. I mean, I can have an opinion on where I think those things land, but bargaining table's going to determine a lot of that. But I do think that, yes, we are going, we're going to change the way we do business probably over the next five years anyway. Having the funds for another year would make that a little bit easier. And feels like we can take things more slowly, more methodically to make better decisions rather than being forced to make quick decisions based upon financial reasons.
Are we able to apply for a continuation of another grant for this?
We will apply, assuming that... Yeah, assuming that we successfully complete all the requirements for the grant this year, we intend to apply for next year.
We can apply, okay. So it's a three-year grant, we're in year two, we have three years guaranteed.
Not guaranteed.
No, not guaranteed. We have to be approved for our final third year.
So it's like an option, you're almost, you hit the requirements, they'll give you year three, but beyond that, you'll have to reapply then.
Beyond that, you can't reapply.
You cannot, oh, okay.
Once you've been funded, I'm sorry. Once you've been funded for year three, the expectation is that you have designed systems and processes and protocols within your district to maintain. So a lot of our requirements have to do with sustainability. So what is the district's plan to sustain the work in the area of professional development and continuing peer observations and establishing career pathways and looking at creative...
So they give you seed money, and the expectation is that after three years that you take it over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Good work. Thank you.
Actually, one question, do you have some conversations with the, I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah.
But have you looked at any, because frankly, the teaching, teaching methodology of how it's paid for to the difference?
We have, probably some of the most interesting conversations we've had is trying to compare that to the private sector.
Yeah.
And, yeah, those are scary conversations.
And no, we have not lost it other industry because I'm...
We've had conversations.
We have, but I don't, but, I mean, because our teachers are union workers, I don't know that we would ever be allowed to really pursue...
We have to sell them. But there's models that absolutely benefit many teachers.
But we don't just have to sell it to, I mean, we'd have to sell it to Mid-Dale Bargaining Council. We wouldn't just be selling it to our members.
Hold another ball.
Yeah, not...
Take that one off me.
Not sure.
Thank you, this is really good. Thank you very much.
You got the previous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll be around all of the Slater projects.
A few heavy topics tonight, and so here's your next one. I'm going to give you a couple of updates real quick before I get into some funding information. Each of you have seen, have seen these at one time or another, so, but I think, of course, that I'm trying to do. The first one is the schedule directly from DOWA, IBI Group. This should look familiar. In fact, I'll just give you all the copies. And the second one is a similar summary that you've seen in the past as well. This one's updated with some more recent information. I just want to spend a couple of minutes on the timeline. Do those first. So you can see on the, you have a larger sheet from DOWA that we're currently on schedule related to each of the, each of the items that DOWA has pegged here. They're, they do have a reconciliation of estimates that was by mid-November, which we have for you this evening. So we're a little bit behind on that, but the bid set, they anticipate instead of December 3rd, by December 8th, and then building permits, bidding, open bids, et cetera, for December and early January. So at this point, we're fully on time and on schedule related to the early tasks related to this project. If you take a look at this summary that I provided for you, you see that the number of completed items are increasing. Ongoing items are just that, they're ongoing. We have a number of items, including the planning commission meeting. Each one of you received an email from me about the planning commission meeting and that that was approved on the 10th of November. Planning Commission asked, or required, actually, that we do a few things, and a few of those things are occurring, such as the, what you see in the line below, the drainage, septic line evaluation and scoping, which is either completed or very near-completed, and will be turned over to the city for their review as well. We also have some additional programming related to Mark Twain occurring. We've made modular classroom, modular building visits. We anticipate securing a contract on the modulars very soon, actually. We're essentially at that point. And then you can see some of those other items there. I do want to highlight that fourth item from the bottom, the James Street tree removal, and I want to highlight that simply because it's something that, why it's, wouldn't be the first choice for anyone in the world. It is a necessity for this school district to have those trees removed. And had a good conversation with the planning commission about this, those trees as well. And again, I summarized that to you in an email to you, but there are some major issues with those trees. We've monitored them for years. The roots in the ground, the roots, period, are getting worse. They cause a number of issues with the parking lot and the sidewalk. We've actually had injured people, even to the point of likely litigation related to an accident that occurred there last spring. So from a school district standpoint, from our insurance company's standpoint, and I think from a public interest standpoint, the trees have to go, and they need to be part of this project in order to go. So I want to make sure that I'm clear in my messaging to you, and of course, to the public who's here tonight and will see this on video as well. We have that, we don't have it scheduled yet, but we'd like to get that project completed sooner than later, and would be ideal to do that at a time when there are not students around. But again, we haven't selected the contractor for that to occur. So more to come on that. Let me get posted, please. Thank you. I appreciated a couple of the comments that, or many of the comments, actually, that both parties shared tonight. This is, as you suggested, Wally, I think, and I, a number of companies that are idea companies, and they do just that, they come up with creative solutions. And I think the Slater project is an example of creative thinking that is necessary in order for us to best move ahead. In order to do that, though, of course, there are risks to be taken, and I think all along we've understood that there are risks to be taken specific to the Slater project, and one of those risks is related to cost. So I'm going to hand out the revised costs to you right now. And I'm going to draw your attention to, very quickly, the fact that the estimates, the revised estimates at this point are indicating that this project will cost more than the loan amount that you have secured for it to occur. So I'm going to draw you your attention, first of all, to the bottom of the sheet, and then I'm going to come back up to the top. If you take a look at the in summary sentence, this is coming directly from DOWA, IBI Group, based upon a lot of work that had occurred over the last, especially, couple of weeks. In summary, total project cost should be in the range of 2.8 to $3 million. That unfortunately caught my attention in a not-so-positive way when I received this updated sheet today. And I've had a couple of good conversations with both our architects, Dan Hess and Nancy Rad. Before I get into this, and I know there'll be some conversation and some questions from you, I do want to let you know that the cost, this cost estimating process is, it's important to understand, and I think many of you do because it's part of your world. But the cost estimating process is just that. You identify the project, you assign the initial estimates based upon the information available at the time, knowing that the project could be, in this case, nearly a year or over a year down the road. And you, we put consultants in a position of saying, "All right, now vet this out and see where we are." The estimates are revised, and at this point are coming in over the amount that was budgeted for the project. And I would much rather sit in front of you here today and say, "We're at," or "We're 20,000 over budget," or "We're $50,000 under budget," and "We're not." These are estimates, however, and I think it is important to remind ourselves that the true determination comes out when we see the actual contracted cost. Let me clarify...
Yeah, I think it's important to note, too, this is still pretty preliminary as well.
It is still...
Until you get your programming documents done, you really don't have a good firm grasp of what the scope's going to be.
So, absolutely, Wally. And again, people like you are more experienced in that world than I am, but that's the same thing that DOWA would share with us, too, is that we're moving ahead. This is the next natural step for that to occur. I want to share a couple of things, though, that I think are real important to identify. First of all, the, this is a similar, this is a similar format, as compared to what you've seen on two occasions in the past, both presented by DOWA, by Dan Hess and Nancy Rad. And so while the numbers have changed somewhat, the categories are still, essentially, still the same. The additional project cost, those, you can see in the middle of the page, not included above, we're still working on a price for hazardous material removal. Actually, Joel has just secured a company to complete a survey on the areas of the building that will be impacted. And that survey, we couldn't even give you a guess right now of how much a hazmat removal will be, but there will have to be some money for that to occur. The SDCs from the high school project, and that's specifically stated that way because the school district will be responsible, we just received confirmation from the city on Friday, for 100, just a little less than $153,000 for assistant development charges for transportation impact. Thankfully, this board at the time, the administration at the time, and I think thankfully, the city, and actually Marion County at the time, created a development agreement, and that was in 2008, where all parties reached agreement that the, there would be no SDCs specific to Silverton High School. They were exempted, deferred, actually, to a point based upon the development agreement at some point in the future when the Slater campus, or possibly even the high school campus, but when additional activity occurred to cause something on those campuses to occur that resulted in a traffic impact analysis. And that's what's occurred now. Here we are, literally six, seven years later, a traffic impact analysis was required for the Slater campus, and as per the development agreement, now the SDCs are due. So after reviewing the development document, after speaking with our authors, after speaking with our bond counsel from that bond, and actually from the last two attempts, Ann Sherman, and actually having a conversation with Craig Ross, who's the former superintendent, it was entirely the attempt at the time for any SDCs in the future, if the campus was activated, to be paid by the remaining bond dollars. And so this, the $153 is not a cost that needs to be incurred by the funds that have been set aside for this project. In fact, it's entirely appropriate and legal for the remaining bond dollars to be used to pay for these SDCs. The easiest way to think about it is that the SDC credit on the Slater campus never went away. In fact, the city doesn't even allow that. When we started talking about even selling Eugene Field, we talked about, "Well, hey, can we transfer the SDCs for Eugene Field to another site?" And the city said, "No, that can't happen." And so the SDCs that were at one time, excuse me, that are on the Slater campus when it was a 1,200-student high school, are still in place. It's just that the traffic impact in this western part of the city has not been impacted by the addition of a new high school. That's why the development agreement was created. So my point to you, in a bit of a roundabout way, is that it's entirely appropriate for us as a school district to use a portion of the remaining bond dollars to pay for the SDCs, because the SDCs are less about this becoming a middle school and more about the traffic impact on the west side as a result of Silverton High School being added, even though it was six years ago.
But do we still have those funds available? I know we held out funds for the roof.
We do. And actually, we have, the balance is about $360,000. Part of the reason that the balance is higher than what we anticipate, at least at this point, is because the high school re-roofing project came in about $200,000 less than we expected. The Memorial project is coming in less than we expected, so we're actually able to complete some of the value-engineered projects and able to complete some of the projects that we weren't able to, like the addition of some exterior cameras on the campus. So we have a balance in there sufficient to cover this cost.
Okay, so there was, yeah, so there was that money, the remaining bond dollars was, I remember hearing about, and Wally touched on, it was earmarked for, the big one was a new roof at the high school.
Correct, or on the phase one of the high school.
Okay, good. And that was done, and it came in cheaper. Good, okay, so that essentially covers this.
That covers this.
Got it.
Perfect. So we're good to go on that count.
In retrospect, we probably should have held those dollars, should have earmarked those dollars for this purpose and held them, but...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's a good point. However, you know, Ann Sherman, our bond counsel, said, "Andy, be certain that you can find the documentation that shows that the SDCs were part of the original budget or planning purposes for it." And we have that. In fact, the, excluding the reality that the Slater campus generated the traffic that it did, the anticipated SDCs for traffic impact were close to $360,000 for the new high school. And that was in 2008. And so the fact now that we're, that we're creating a campus, activating the campus of 450 students, of course, was just a portion of that, and things have changed. One huge change between 2008 and now is the full development of the West Side Land Use Planning document that wasn't in place in 2008. It is now. And so that created quite a bit of clarity related to what the west side is going to look like 15, 20, even 25 years from now. And the way the city calculates the amount, that $153,000, and I'm talking about it just as a proportion of the increase to the James and Pine Street intersection. And so that's our proportion. And so it will be added with all of the other developers, including homeowners who have developed property on the west side and will over the course of the next X number of years, whatever the city identifies. So that's, when you see there, the SDCs from the high school project, that's $153,000 price tag, but that will be taken care of by the remaining bond dollars. Conditional use approval, those are fairly minimal, but they will need to be addressed, things like the addition of trees out on the front of the campus, on Slater Street, and some of the other items that we referred. I sent you a list with a number of those conditional things, signage, some striping, directional signage management related to placing our student pickup and drop-off location here on the, in the old student parking lot on Brown Street. There is still some potential, and we have not received the information, the specific direction from the city at this point, but whether there will be a requirement for fire sprinklers in the multipurpose room, the old multipurpose room, which is designed now to be split in half, and the potential added fire hydrants. We know we have at least one, potentially two, fire hydrants to be added on campus, but there's been some discussion by the city about adding a third fire hydrant even on Slater Street. And that's uncertain at this point in time, yeah. So the fire district has to give us some direction, and we have a meeting, Joel and I, along with our architects, scheduled for, I think, the week after we get back from Thanksgiving break to hopefully pin them down on that and just say, "What do we need?" So when you see the range...[1792.54]
Can he justify that?
Joel can chime in if you want. But what I can tell you is that the standard that the fire district uses, my understanding, is that if every corner of this campus was fully involved in a fire, and we had to tap into every one of the four or five fire hydrants available, would it work? And that's their standard. If you think about it realistically, would you have every corner of this campus on fire at any one time? Well, probably not, however, that's the standard that they use.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so from that perspective, that truly is a sheer water volume perspective at that point in time. There are some potential savings still with site utilities based upon what the city will see with the information that we present to them, but we're actually finding that the scoping and the evaluation of the subject system around the school is in pretty good shape. There was a small portion of drain that we had to replace, and we've already done it on the front of Brown's, excuse me, James Street, and we are aware that there is, could be a small section of sewer line that we'd have to replace that actually the city dug into a number of years ago between the gym entrance of the building and out onto James Street as well. But at this point, what we've discovered with our evaluation is that the subject system is functional and is still working and will support 450 kids and 90-plus kids at a community school here. So with all that said, Wally, I'm going to go back to the point you made a little while ago, this is still in the preliminary stages because there are still some pieces of information that, but worst case scenario, based upon what Dow is telling us, is that looking at that upwards towards the $3 million price tag, best case scenario could still be, could still be less than the 2.8. However, I think it's realistically, realistic and entirely appropriate for me to sit in front of you today and say, the numbers are getting more and more revised, so with that said, we need to know, it looks like we could be over budget on this project. Now, I'm not coming you with, now what do we do? Because I really want you to give some consideration to the fact that this project is as important as we are in the investment that we have, and I think the fact that it's going to be a pretty, it continues to be a project that will shape this district for years to come, it's important that we keep the momentum going, and that's part of the conversation I'm going to have with you this evening. So with that said, you do have a couple of options if this were to be realized. First of all, you have, you qualify for a loan if a person wanted to, and this is not necessarily my first choice, but a person could go, or the district could go back to your lender, and you could say, you know, we need to adjust this because the reality is it's going to come in under budget. I'm not excited about that option. Number two, and this again is not necessarily in this particular order, you're fortunate that you have a capital projects fund that is healthy, it's just under 1.2 million as some of you will recall, and we've kept it there for use towards other projects in the district. That will allow some buffering, and it could be, if the district wanted to, if you as a board said, let's do it, tap right into that if we needed to in order to get that done. The third, and this is some information that I think is where you're going to go, and that's the sale of Eugene Field School. And I think depending upon the revenue that you generate from that, if that's what the board chooses to do, also offers you another alternative for you to offset the cost of any overage if the full overages are to be realized. And finally, from a cost standpoint, this project will be buffered by some things that are unknown to you at this point. One of them is, we are able to utilize our, it's called Senate Bill 1149, which are public purpose dollars that are gained from utilities, specifically electricity and gas and so forth, sold within Silver Falls School District. A percentage of this, albeit it's a small percentage of that, comes into the district coffers every month, and we're able to use those for, especially energy improvement projects. So the full lighting in the gym in this project will be, a replacement of the lighting will be about a $29,000 hit. Full lighting in the gym will be paid from the public purpose fund, and so won't need to be derived from the loan. Second to that, every year we qualify for E-rate reimbursement, and E-rate reimbursement used to be specific to providing telecommunication standardization across the country, literally, and that's what we use it for in this district for many years. The federal government has shifted that focus from telecommunications now to specific internet access, wireless access, and technology access within the school setting. That's going to be about a $44,000 access that we're able to use to help offset the technology investment that we're going to make into this building. Which will be about, about half, about half the technology investments going to be required to bring this Slater campus back on, back on board. We've also applied, well, there's no guarantee in this area, we've applied for a number of grants related to facilities. We all of you know, we brought a grant writer on board a couple of months ago, and the target focus of that grant writer is specific to facilities. And so he's actually going to, is working, or will be working with both principals of the school to target some additional grants related to that. Everything from paint to landscaping to additional security cameras to technology, all of those are targeted grants, and we're hopeful actually that we're going to be able to acquire some funding for that. It's not going to be enough to fully eliminate this difference if this difference were realized, but I think it's important for you to know that we're looking at all options to continue, to get sufficient dollars to make this happen. So that's the news, and that was, again, not the news that I wanted to share with you specifically this evening, but I think it's important for you to understand that projects sometimes come in over. I mean, I'm no expert in this field by any means, but at the same time, I also know that we've got some work to do in order to continue to make this work and to make it right. So I'll answer any questions that you may have if you have any specific.
What was the exact figure of the original loan again? Was it 2.4?
The original loan?
The original-
The original note was actually 2.550,000. A portion of that was skimmed off the top for, for the security of the loan, for attorney fees and legal fees and all those things. So we have about 2,530,000-ish.
Should look at about a couple hundred thousand all the way up to-
Potential 450,000?
Over.
If it was fully realized. The other piece that, if we can use this as any kind of a predictor, is that if we take a look at the estimates, and we've had a lot of estimates for lots of things over the years, and generally speaking, my experience has been the estimates come in a little bit higher than what they are actually to be realized. I don't think we can say that as a guarantee every time, but if there's anything that we can say, eh, we still don't know until the actual contract comes in after we go out for bid, then we can't say with certainty of actual cost.
It's almost always the case though.
Yeah, it is, it is. We realized it when we remodeled this place, we realized it when we constructed the high school, you know, that, we realized it when we demolished the egg shop.
Estimator's going to want to be low.
The estimate on the egg shop, yeah, was around $75,000, it came in at just under 40. I mean, there, I think that's part of the nature of the process, is my understanding.
So they have an estimate for the potential cost on these additional projects that weren't added in?
Which one are you referring to?
Down below, so the additional projects costs not included above. I realize that SDCs I think were about 300,000, you said 150,000, about can come out of the old bond. So do we have, should it's a rough guess on the rest of that at all, or?
I don't, and I think if Dan or Nancy were here, they'd say they don't as well, because they don't, we haven't secured that. So they, they took a bit of a shot in the dark by putting that $3 million figure there, with the understanding that it would, it would assume those costs, because I can't even tell you what they are.
Well, because you had 2.9 above 150,000 for the SDCs, that's a 3.1, or almost 3.3 million 50,000, so-
Right.
That's why I just was curious if we had a ballpark, if it was 10,000 or 100,000 or-
And they did not include $153,000, because they know that that is coming from a different fund. So they wanted this, so you could compare apples to apples about what needs to be provided by the fund, whether it be the loan or combination of the loan and other funding mechanisms that we use to pay for this, where the $153,000 is coming from a dedicated account.
Okay. I assume the hazardous materials is lead and asbestos?
Yes. Are there any other hazards over there? That's it.
Are we really disturbing that much area?
Depends upon the scope of the work, and, you know, we're going to be opening some walls, we're not going to be demolishing a lot of walls, but we're going to be opening walls and, you know, there's asbestos in seam tape and in wallboard, right?
It should be pretty limited, I would think.
I would think so too, but I also know that there is some mechanical removal of some equipment, especially in the multipurpose room area, and-
That'll be more expensive.
And that'll be more expensive to remove, especially the asbestos from that and stuff. There's no action or anything needed from the board at this time? I think a little additional clarity will come, and, you know, unless you as a board tell me otherwise, of course, I believe that we need to move ahead, and rather than consider this to be any kind of a setback, we just consider this to be additional information that we need to address in order to best take care of this project.
I would agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, Slater Campus name. This was just for more discussion on this tonight. I think, Aaron, did you have something you wanted to bring up on this one?
Yeah, I kind of did some polling in my own way, and, you know, I find social media to be a very convenient way to put out a good here to the public and get some input on what we should name the school. You know, just kind of threw it out there. In general terms, I also threw out a couple of the different ones that I wanted to share, but I also wanted to piggyback on what Aaron Willow brought in the last time we met. It seems like we've, in a way, kind of helped, she's offered to kind of help get some names for us within the staff and students at the middle school, to kind of poll and get a pulse of what they think they should name the new middle school. And it was to my understanding, if I'm hearing, if you guys are going to agree into that as well, that's kind of what we tasked her to do, she would put kind of the feelers out at the next board meeting, or before the next board meeting, would potentially give us a list of kind of their top five, so to speak, or top three, whatever that may be. Again, I heard some of the same ones that she had listed when I threw it out in the community. You know, I heard a resounding, if we could have a female literary figure, that would be great. You know, I threw out the ideas of, well, can we keep it to a local figure? Because that would be a very neat thing to do, to have a local person that we honor by naming the school after. You know, I've got the laundry list of, you know, Helen Keller, Harper Lee, Beverly Cleary, Jane Austen, Lorengos Wilder, Charlotte Bronte, all strong, great literary figures. And I've heard both sides of the coin of keep a literary figure, and the other folks are saying, I don't mind what it is. I guess personally, I'm kind of the either or. I like, would like to see some local impact potentially, or a local person be honored with this if we can. I would love to be, you know, somebody local. I don't know, and again, this is my opinion. I threw out two other names out there just to see what the litmus test would be. One was our local astronaut, Don Pettit, you know, and the astronaut out of Silverton. So that's a pretty amazing accomplishment, using his skills that he learned here in his public school days in Silverton, and, you know, literally the sky was the limit, wasn't even the limit for him, right? So what a great figure to have. The other name I threw out there too, to kind of incorporate it in, I heard a lot from the community about potentially, you know, a female figure. And the other name I threw out there was Krista McAuliffe, and I wasn't trying to be too much on a NASA theme, but it was, you know, came to mind of, kind of, you know, birds of a new pioneer, a first potential educator in space, and a wonderful female role model. Unfortunately tragically, you know, did not, did not get to space. So I got some good input on that, and I got some great input on Don Pettit. And again, I wasn't trying to harp on the astronaut kind of theme, but those were two that kind of came to my mind. It seems like when you throw opinion out there, or something out there, you get 15,000 different opinions. So here's what I wanted to ask you guys, and I mentioned this to Andy that I think might be nice, is, with your guys' permission, if I could reach out to Aaron Willow and say, hey, here's some of the ones I've heard from the community, you guys, you folks at Mark Twain have kind of got your top four or five going. I've got two others, you know, I was going to throw Pettit's name out there and Krista McAuliffe's name out there to see if that resonated with the kids and the staff out there as well. And just to kind of open up this two-way dialogue of, hey, we're getting some community input, and some board input, and some staff and student input as well on this whole, on this topic. So that's just all I kind of wanted to report to you guys and say, you know, do you have any objection to that? Or that way, in the next few weeks, they can kind of collect maybe their top four or top five and then bring it to us. So that was my one ask. The other thing is, is if we don't feel like we're ready to name it come December 14th, and we really want to throw it out to the public, and again, this is kind of my last 30-second idea before I got here tonight, was if any of you have used Survey Monkey, all right? It's an online survey we can create, any one of us can create, and throw out a link to anybody, whether it be on social media or in the public, and they can vote. So if we don't feel comfortable in saying, stepping out and taking, making a decision on a name, we could also throw it right back out in the public eye and say, we would like your opinion. Here's our top four or five that came from the community, students and staff. City of Silverton, Silver Falls School District, outlining school areas, everybody has a skin in the game. Top vote gets it. There you go, here's five to choose from. So that's the other option I kind of thought of. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up to discuss and see what you guys' thoughts are on that.
I'd be concerned about the Survey Monkey, because it's all a matter of who goes in and accesses it. And I, we're going to leave people out, and I'd be concerned about that.
I was just thinking-
As far as your other two ideas, throwing it out, I think that's a great idea.
I was just trying to figure out how can we, other than social media, we're open to some of the opinions of the public.
Have we, I was at the last board meeting, have we put, you know, I like the idea, personally like the idea of giving the school a name, but after SAG or somebody, but have we put the, the idea of just giving it, just calling it Silverton Middle School?
No, we haven't put that to the meeting.
Maybe that's the decision we may make, decide if we're going to give it a name or just call it the middle school.
At the last meeting, Tom, one of the teachers from Mark Twain spoke, and she said that, you know, kind of what they'd been thinking, half of them didn't really care, half of them thought they should have, so she wondered if it would be okay if they came back to us with like their top, their top three ideas of a name. And that's where, that's where we left it. We, you know, we did it all, it was all in public, so we figured that was the public exposure that would have been. So yeah, but it all-
It's such a hard decision, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
I guess I would like to hear from the staff and students, and it seemed like, you know, Aaron Willow was very, very, you know, engaged in, hey, I'll take this and run with it. So I just would like to, you know, throw it back and write an email to her and just say, hey, here's, here's some of the stuff I've heard from the community, here's a couple of our ideas, we acid test this with the students and the staff, as part of her research. Is that there?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that. I don't like the idea of the survey.
Okay.
Survey even personally, but.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Any other thoughts?
If I can suggest, I see that Nancy's here this evening, not Nancy. Do you have any update from, any update from Aaron?
She's been asking staff, I was just asking her what she's doing with the acid.
Oh, okay. So you get a live update, okay.
But she has been asking staff, people have been giving, you know.
And is she prepared to come back on the 14th and share her results with the board? That's what you're asking, okay, great.
Okay, well, we can all reach out to her, just with some of the names that I've heard from social, social media, and some thoughts and ideas, and see what we come up with collaboratively.
And it could be that if we, you know, if we decide on a name other, or other than Silverton Middle School, we may have to take another month if we have to narrow it down between the group of three or something, so. Okay. Anything else on this?
I would just say, Aaron, whatever you email or to Aaron, just forward it on to the rest of the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
No worries.
You know, and also too, just, I just want to clarify too, that we're not, we're not telling or sending the wrong message to Aaron that, hey, we are going to name it specifically after an author, and empower her to think that we're going to do one thing and then decide on some others. Does she knows that we're still thinking about Silverton Middle School, or whatever that is?
No, I agree. I just wanted to, I wanted to throw to her things that, in my, if you want to call it research. wanna call it research, with the community as to what the suggestions that I've heard, just kind of keep, again, make it up, everybody kinda has some skin in this project, so.
So, does anybody know what the cost and time is involved in, in approaching a, a family to say, hey, we'd like to name the school after you, or?
I'm sure there's some attorney fees and, and time and whatnot.
Yeah, my, yes, and, and especially with a, with an author's name, a trademark or copyright, I can't remember what the legal term for it is, but distinctly, there is, there is a cost to, to name some more than others. I don't know what those are specifically, Todd, Danny Stevens is actually doing some research, taking some of the example of the names that we've talked about, number one, to find out if it's even possible, number two, then if it's possible, what are those costs being? And then, you know, I think, I think it's also important to, to ask if, if the person is deceased or still alive, whether that makes a difference about, as an example, Don, Don Pettit, who may just say, if you're interested, sure, use, use my name, but then he may have some very specific things, I mean, maybe he would want to influence your decision to say he wants a, you know, some kind of commitment for a, a certain specific physics or science emphasis on the campus, you know, and so, so there would have to be, whether, there may not be any costs associated with that directly, but there may be expectations associated over the years.
I'd submit, too, saying that, that there was some reservation about naming it after somebody who, who is not yet deceased, that, you know, they're still writing their story, and, you know, they're, so, and that was some good input, I didn't think about that.
They could, they could go off the rails.
But that was the input that I heard, was, hey, they're, you know, they're still writing their legacy.
It's true, it's true.
And we've seen examples in the public eye where at the end of the book, somebody's legacy, they kind of tarnish it, and go, oh, boy, that wouldn't be a good name, so, so that was one piece of input that I did here, too.
And then, when you think about our three poets, writers, school namesakes in town, all three of those folks were deceased at the time that those schools were.
Correct. Yeah. I'd be a little nervous about maybe that's gonna say nice.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I, I asked that, 'cause I, I've heard a few people say, you know, hey, whatever's cheapest goes first.
Yeah.
Well, that's definitely something.
I think we're gonna, I think people have to understand, and, and, and I, and I think we need to make sure our public understands, no matter what we do, even if we call it Silverdilsing, there's gonna be cost incurred, if we call it Mark Twain, there's gonna be cost incurred, whatever we name it, there's gonna be some type of form of cost incurred.
Yeah, but you know, if, if the family says, yeah, if you wanna name it Laura Ingalls Wilder, it's thirty thousand dollars.
Forget, sorry, you know.
Yeah, that's important.
Or whatever it might be, that might be, you know, way out of line, but I don't know.
I'll, I'll follow up with Andy, Phil, Todd, and the rest of you, and she'll give you a couple of examples in the way of what, what that looks like.
Okay. Okay, and then one other thing, under other items, our December work session right now is scheduled for the twenty-eighth, which is smack dab in the middle of Christmas break, so I don't know if that's a problem for any, but I know I won't be, I won't be able to be here.
I won't be here.
But we could either do it on the twenty-first, or Andy was saying there isn't a whole lot right now that looks pressing, so we could tentatively cancel it and decide at our December fourteenth meeting if we needed to have it on the twenty-first or not.
So, is it just played later?
Yeah. We're, we're, we're the right to cancel if you're down on the agenda.
Right now, should we move it to the twenty-first, and then we'll re, look at it again on the fourteenth?
No, it's just like we.
It's the first week, it's the first, first week of Christmas break. Now, 'cause our December meeting is later than normal, I think, that's why there are kind of a bunch of.
It, it's, it's still a month away, you're right, there aren't any pressing topics. The topics that I did share with Tim, based upon your conversation to this point, has been those that are data-specific, so in December, we talked about updates on transfer data, some enrollment data, we have some healthy team survey data, some other material that was scheduled to, and then to get your, some of your input about what other data you'd like to see from me. That can be postponed to January. My suggestion would be, though, is if you're going to make the decision to make it either now, or, or if, if you're going to move it to make that decision now, I think for the sake of the public, they appreciate knowing a few weeks ahead of time if a meeting is canceled, as compared to cancel, let's say, a week in advance or something, which would be, I think, problematic.
So, do you feel comfortable canceling it?
I do.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we cancel it unless something major?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's good. Okay, so we will take a real quick break, we'll move out of regular session and a journey to executive session in about two minutes. Under RRS one-nine-two-six-six-oh, your complaints or charges brought against the public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing. And thank you from Marie for sitting and listening to all that. You just went before out the door. Okay, we'll move out of executive session, back into regular session. We have one more discussion item, our Board Superintendent Working Agreement. This is something that we've wrestled with last August, that are, and put together. I think it's a good document personally, and so, we have it in front of us to review a little bit, if there's anything anybody wants to look at, or I think it's important that we all, all review this once in a while, I know I need to, just to make sure that we're all abiding by it. Andy, do you have any?
No, I think it's a, it's a, it's a comprehensive document, that it's actually taken a few years to get to this point, and your updates and revisions last summer, I think, reflects some great training. I think it's a very, very purposeful document, and I think it gives some great direction for this school district board and myself included.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay.